Ready. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April 24th, 2017 at 6:35 PM at the Joseph Pilotta Meeting Room, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and discuss the application for site plan approval under Section 8.4 Protective Bylaw of the Town of Lunenburg. The application is for construction of an office and garage for municipal water and supplier at 496 Massachusetts Avenue, MAP 073, Parcel 0004, Lunenburg, Mass. Applicant owner is Lunenburg Water District, P.O. Box 375, Lunenburg, Mass. 01462. Copies are on file in the Planning Office, 960 Massachusetts Avenue, Lunenburg, Mass.
Evening.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Cleaves. I'm with Whitman and Bingham Associates, Civil Engineers for the project, also here with members of the Lunenburg Water District. I have a board that should move the easel in a better location.
Laser pointer, too, if you'd like that.
Whatever is preferred, I can bring it close to me, or it can stay over here. Whatever.
Yeah, if you still want to...
Whatever the board prefers.
That's fine. Yeah, if you leave it right there, they can get it with the camera, so they...
And I also have, if it helps out, I just reduced that down to 11 by 17 with the color.
Sure.
If it helps out.
It may. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're here tonight for site plan for the Lunenburg Water District. Their office is currently located off of Route 13, probably everyone's familiar with it, kind of behind Sean Patrick's, off of Pierce Avenue. So they're looking to create a new home for their office and a garage component to that. So they have a 2,400 square foot office, which is located in the front of the building, that's the smaller rectangle, and then a 6,000 square foot garage, which is in the back. So it's set back quite a distance off the road, intentionally oriented the way that you see it there to try and kind of hide the size of the building from the road, so you're trying to really just see the front, the front of the office. The garage in the back has drive-through doors, and you could literally drive right through the garage with overhead doors on each side of the building. We have a driveway coming up off of Mass Ave. The lot that's there now, it's about seven and a half acres total. There are, there's a utility easement, power lines, transmission lines that cross the property, cross the side of the property on the west side, and they actually cross along the back. The lot, previously, was used as a single-family house lot. There was a home there, it's been since removed, there's an existing driveway, you know, there was some lawn areas and whatnot, so that's all going to be removed. We have a new driveway going in just west of where the existing curb cut is, off of Mass Ave. You come pretty much straight in 90 degrees off of Mass Ave, up into the site, and then you see the office, front doors, you drive up, and then you have parking areas in the front of the building, and then a little bit on the side. And we have pavement all around the building to give them access to the garage with their trucks and equipment. We're proposing to have a dumpster area, and that's, if you have my color plan there, a white, it's an area that's left, a white on the west side, so more to the top side of the page, small area for a dumpster. We're looking to have propane for a fuel source for the building, emergency generator as well, and those are within the landscape areas around the side of the building. There is municipal water in Mass Ave, so we're going to have a connection to the municipal water system, which works out well for the Lunenburg Water District. There is no sewer available in Mass Ave, so we are going to have an onsite sewage disposal system for the sewage. The stormwater, so as you can see on the plans, so what we're trying to do is limit the use of catch basins and manholes as much as we could in trying to have sheet flow on a majority of the site where we have water sheeting away from the building. The site is somewhat crowned right through the, across the middle of the long end of the building, where the east side of the building will sheet off to a swale and into a stormwater infiltration basin. The west side will sheet off the pavement into a swale, and then into a catch basin that will pipe that flow over to the infiltration basin. Infiltration basin will have a four-bay, and then the outflow of that would go down the front to a swale along Mass Ave, as it does now. And then to capture flow that we couldn't get into the infiltration basin due to elevations, we don't want though, we want to be able to capture the water before it gets to the swale at Mass Ave, so at the bottom of the driveway, we have a catch basin going into a water quality unit, and that's piping into an area on the side of Mass Ave as well. As Mass Ave is a state road, we filed permits with Mass DOT, one for curb cut permit for the driveway, and then another one for tying utilities into Mass Ave. So we have gotten the permit from Mass DOT for the utility one, which is typically an easier one, straightforward to get. We haven't received anything back from Mass DOT yet on the curb cut, so we're still awaiting that. We're also, as a portion of the project, that is within the 100-foot buffer zone for some wetlands that are on the west side of the project, that's, most of that area is actually underneath the transmission lines. We've been to the Conservation Commission, and they issued an order of conditions at their last meeting for that work. That's a brief overview of the project. Be happy to, I know Graves Engineering has done an initial review, there's comments there, or anything else, you know where we'd like to go from here. We have some waivers, too, that we've requested, so...
Are there any initial questions or comments from the board?
You said that Conservation already approved the...
Yes, correct.
So they were okay with the septic system being within 100 foot?
The septic system is outside the 100-foot buffer zone.
Isn't the leach area go beyond just where the pipes are, though?
So it's, you can see the yellow line, the trenches are just outside the 100-foot buffer zone. It's graded and associated with that, but the actual leaching system is outside of that, it's outside the 100-foot buffer zone. And those septic plants have been submitted to the Shover Board of Health for their review. We've gotten some preliminary comments, we'll have to make some minor updates for that, but nothing major. Okay? And actually, I do have elevations, I have a blow-up of the elevation of the building on the other side of that board. If you'd like, whenever you're ready, we can flip to that if you want to see that, when you're ready to look at the building.
So all your water is being captured and filtered into this front swale, is that...
Yes, so what's happening is we have... Anthony. So close to the site now, it all comes down...
Slopes down in.
Down to Mass Ave. Mass Ave is actually this way, across the street, but there's a swale along Mass Ave where the water goes to two culverts that cross Mass Ave. And so we're trying to not change those characteristics. We have, now the driveway becomes our high point, still want to keep that swale, else the water would shed off, as it does now. So to help mitigate the increase in the pervert surfaces, we have this infiltration basin, where we have, you know, water going from the bottom of it, but then also, you have a culvert out to that, and then it overflows away. So what happens is, the site is graded, well, this is a high point, this side sheets into this grass swale, water goes into a catch basin here, and then gets piped over to the four-bay. This side of the site sheets across into this swale, right into that stormwater basin, and then that's just, and then it gets out there. And then, at the bottom of the driveway, so we don't have a surge of the water coming down to the base of the driveway, we have catch basin of our quality unit intercepting that flow. We're going with double grades to try and intercept as much of that flow as we can at the bottom, and then pipe that over to a little swale area that we created here, so it continues on to where it goes now.
And the slope drains uphill will catch it and just redirect it down?
The catch basin?
Yeah, no, up, yeah, upgrade.
Yes, these are basic grass rails, so the water shoots off, off the pavement, you know, basically, the high points being the garage doors, everything sheets off, and then this is graded such that high to low, it sheds the water.
Okay, so everything coming off the hill is also going to go, just going to come right down?
Actually, it's a great point, good question. This is a cut situation here, we are cutting into this slope, so you see here, we have this stone, basically that's to help keep the slope stable, give the water, if there is, we have some groundwater bleeding out of the slope, this helps keep the water, give it a place to go.
Brings it right down?
We do have a toll ring at the bottom of the slope, same thing, help intercept that water, give it a safe place to go without losing that.
Is that going to be, I mean, is that going to be grass?
Yes, yes.
It'll be lawn?
Lawn, except for the rock slope drains.
Yeah, okay.
You know, this probably, you know, won't be bouldered, you know, you may not just let it grow, you know, the metal type.
Yeah, and then natural vegetation above that, beyond that, okay.
Nothing around here, it's almost all the stir, bend and stir, because this is, this is a power line easement. You can see right here, this is already a car path, it's used for access to the transmission line, it kind of comes up around, so that area is kind of always bend and stir, we're not, and to change, you know, any of that.
Thank you.
Just a question. They did touch on this at the ConsCon meeting, the existing culverts under the road. How do we know that those are adequate? I know that, because according to your existing conditions, one is partially buried and the other end is not found. I know you're only responsible for what's on your site.
Right, and that's exactly, that's exactly it.
But I don't know if we need to, I mean, if you can work in conjunction, I don't know, I know it's a state road, so I'm not sure if our local BPW would have any input on that, or would, I don't want to open a can of worms.
No, but that's exactly it, though, you know, we look at, not, we don't want to make a situation worse, you know, and that's why we have the stormwater components that we have, is to decrease the rate of runoff leaving the site, and so we've done that. It is a decrease.
Based on, yeah, based on the plan, you aren't adding any more water to the road at all.
Correct, right, correct. The peak rate is, the peak rate would be less, and that's where you're looking at capacity of pipes, is that peak rate. So we're definitely not going to make any situation, any situation worse. As it is, the Water District had already, this, this, this culvert here, originally was not found at the end, they found, you know, so it's, that now is, has an end to it, that the water...
Okay, yeah, that was my concern, is that if those are both blocked, then you're not adding any runoff, but it has nowhere to go.
Absolutely, so it's, you know, if there is any issues there now, those aren't going to go away, but I've met with the homeowner across the street, I wasn't aware of any major issues there, but it being a state road, it's going to have to be contacting Mass DOT, almost separate of this, and say, hey, listen, you know, you have a culvert that's, you know, old, you know, you need to fix it, and, you know, try and do that, you know. And that may came, come up during the curb cut permit, too, you know, as they're doing the review, that's the, I guess the good thing, is we have an opportunity to bring that up with them. But as far as our project, we look at it as, we don't want to make any situation, you know, worse than it is now, and so we feel as though we've fulfilled our obligation to that. The other thing you have to not to keep, the other thing you have to look out for, too, is, you know, say, I'm safe to say that those culverts that are there now probably aren't designed for 100-year storm event, but, you know, we're not responsible to do that at this point. My concern would be, is if, say, we were to take that on, and now change that culvert, make it larger, what you have to watch out for is, what did you just change? You know, if we made this pipe larger, where, you know, say it's, 100-year storm doesn't get through, and now you make it larger, so now the flow does get through fine, without puddling over here, what did you just do to this guy? You just allowed more water to get through onto this apartment property, so now this, at least people say, hey, you just changed the drainage characteristics. You know, so that's what you always got to watch out for, you try and address, maybe one person's concern, it could cause, like you said, a can of worms somebod.
Right, and I'm not saying it's your responsibility to fix it, but...
No, it's a good point to bring up, absolutely, and we looked at that, and we just felt as though we want to make sure our site is not causing anything above and beyond what's already happening there, and we feel as though that we've done that.
So you had the opportunity to review and respond to the items from the peer review letter?
We've had an opportunity to go through them. We haven't done any formal response or changes to the plans as of yet. What we're hoping we can maybe do is, if you'd like to go through them, and some of these, we may ask for the board to entertain waivers, other comments, you may have further input that may impact any revisions that may or may not get made, so we're hoping to discuss that, and anything else the board may want to discuss tonight, and hopefully have one round of revisions, make it easy for us to do, hopefully, one set of revisions, hopefully make it easier for Graves in the subsequent review, so. But we've gone through them, and I'm prepared to discuss them if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to do that. Some of them are...
It's all minor.
...seem to be clerical, and other ones seem to be more interesting. Does everybody have those in front of them?
Could I ask another question, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Can you just describe a little bit about the holding tank for the garage?
Sure, absolutely.
And where that water is going?
So because there is no municipal sewer system enabled to tie in, and as this is a garage with overhead doors, plumbing code requires floor drains in a building when you have overhead doors, so we have to have floor drains. We need to have that discharge somewhere. Ordinarily, with a municipal sewer, you could have it go through an oil-water separator, tie it right into municipal sewer, piece of cake, no big deal. We don't have that, we have an onsite septic system. You're not allowed to discharge floor drains to an onsite septic system. So basically, we have what people would consider a tight tank. So it's a tank with no outlet, so any water or any fluids that end up making it into the floor drains in the building, go out to that holding tank. Holding tank would have floats in it, with an alarm system, that, once it reaches a certain level, alarm goes off in the building, you've got to have a pumper truck come and suck it out. You know, so again, the expectation is not a lot of fluids are going to get in there, it's protected from, from the rain, you may have, you bring a truck in in the winter, it has some snow melt, you may have some of that get in there, you know, if you have some oil spillage or something, so it's not, you know, it's not expected to fill up frequently. But when it does get to that capacity, alarm goes off, you call in your septic caller to come in, you know, and then pump it out.
So where does the discharge pipe then go, from the pump that's in the detail? So in the detail plan, you got the tank, or is this...
That's the septic.
That's the septic tank, okay, so is there a detail for that holding tank?
Nope.
No, I don't believe there's one, there was one on there.
Well, here it is, floor drain holding tank, I got it.
Does it have the alarm, you know, the floats are in there, too, actually? I have that right in front of me here. Yeah, there it is, the floor drain holding tank, yep.
Okay.
Yep, so we have a float, float alarm in there, you know, for that. We're looking at having a 1,500-gallon tank, which is a pretty, you know, pretty decent size, you know, it's, that's always the balance, you try and find where, you don't want to go too small, where you find that you're spending a lot of money on pumping it, but you don't want to go too large, where you're spending a lot of upfront costs on a tank that you'll pump out once every five years, so usually, you know, 1,500 is a nice, is a nice size for this application.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Yep. So would you like to go over the review letter? Are there any other questions first?
I'm fine with the review.
Yep. So I guess if we, you said you want to go through most of them, you got our feedbacks, so just want to run through each one, or...
Yeah, I'd be happy to, it's, if you'd like, I can, I can read them and read the comments, and whatever you would like, that'd be fine.
Yeah, if you'd just like to read through them, that'd be good.
So the first, the first page of the letter, basic introduction, referencing the documents that Graves was able to review, so we start with Comment 1. Sheet N1 of the plans utilize a parking factor of 1 parking space per 250 square feet of gross floor area for office use, however, the bylaw requires 1 parking space per 1,000 square feet. We don't have any issue with the number of proposed parking spaces, 14, but for the record, the parking calculation should be revised. Yep, absolutely, it actually makes, it makes the requirement go down, so it's, I guess it a typo on that one. Number 2, this is in the Board Rules and Regulations section of Site Plan Approval and Special Permits. Five waivers have been requested, G E I does not have any engineering-related issues with the waiver requests, and we can go into the waivers afterwards if you'd like.
Yeah, we'll hit those next.
Number 3, Sheet E1 of the plans must be stamped by professional land surveyor, that's the existing conditions plan. Sure, that's no problem, we can do that. Number 4, General Note #2 on Sheet N1 of the plans indicates an assumed datum. The plans must be prepared using the Mass State Plane North American Datum 1983, and the vertical datum must be North American Vertical Datum 1988, with units of U.S. survey feet. So the existing conditions was done by another company prior to we were involved in the project, and we don't believe they were done to that standard, they were done a couple years ago, so we didn't change that, so that will be, you know, now seeing that, that here, that would be another waiver, we would ask the board to entertain. It would be to go and resurvey it and change all our elevations to those, will just kind of set us back a little bit. In this case, where we don't have any floodplain, so we don't need to compare to FEMA's datum, that's usually when we always try and have things on a datum that you can compare to floodplain. Basically, the site works in and of itself, it's relative to itself, so we'd ask that to be a waiver we could add to our list for the board to entertain for consideration.
Before we move on, Adam, this, I believe this came up in another recent project, and...
Yeah, and the board was willing to waive the vertical, it's the horizontal datum that's more important, because that's how the project would integrate into the GIS spatially.
Sure.
You know, the up and down is less critical.
All right. So if that is something that, you know, maybe what we could do is, we could go out and GPS a couple of points, and give, and put, and give those reference points to the town, if that's what the purpose is, I think that would be a lot easier than having to change all of our elevations and change the proposed grades and existing grades. That would be a lot easier, where we could put literally two control points and say, you know, Mass State Plane coordinates, X and Y on that. I think that would be reasonable to do.
Okay.
To consider, anyways. Number 5, the plan set must be revised to include all buildings within 200 feet of the site's property lines. For example, all the buildings on the following lots are not shown, 466, 467, 473, 474, 545, 506, and 512, and now I'm just going to skip to number 6, because it kind of is in relation to that. The plan set must be revised to include the existing driveway openings within 300 feet of the site's property lines. So with the scale of the plan that we did, we tried to go the smallest scale that we could, so everything is legible, so what happens is our window gets kind of choked down, we'd have to kind of zoom out to show all of that, which we can do that, and, you know, that may be another one that, if we, if it's possible to ask for a waiver, we could, otherwise, we would do a separate plan, just for the purpose of showing where those driveways were, we'd probably just use some aerial imagery to show those buildings. It's, for the most part... I think we're just talking about, so this, you see this house here, it's not much further this way, and we do show this house here, but this front edge is only 100 feet or so, so it would be one more lot this way, where we could change the scale of plan, then this information gets a little harder to read. We could do a separate plan if you'd like for that, or if you had to obtain a waiver on those, we would ask for that, and we can come back and talk about that later.
Sure, put it on the waiver list.
And then the hydrology computations in Stormwater Management Section. Number 7, G E I reviewed the hydrology calculations and found them to be in order, so we'll comment there. 8, Compliance with Mass DEP Stormwater Handbook is in order, except as noted in the following comments. Number 9, Soil Testing Information Needs to be Submitted for Test Pit 317-1, the test pit located at the infiltration basin. Yes, absolutely, we have that. The comment is, most of the testing we've done throughout the site was more for septic system, we did do, once we knew where we wanted the stormwater basin to be, we did one specifically in the basin, and consistent across the site, estimated seasonal high groundwater with modeling was, was found to be consistently about 2 and 1/2 feet below grade. And so, when you look at the basin itself, we purposely, a lot of the basin is actually in fill, so... So basically, the existing concrete that goes through the bottom of the basin is 112 on the high side, and then the land slopes down, we're 110 on this end. We set the bottom of the basin at 112, basically at the highest grade of the existing topography, such that we have a 2-foot separation from the bottom of the basin to the groundwater, actually 2 and 1/2, but so, and on this end, it would be, it would be more, because our basin would be level and the existing topography slopes down. So that was how, that was kind of established, is to make sure that we have that 2-foot offset to groundwater. But absolutely, we have that, I can submit that, no problem. Number 10, kind of falls in line a little bit. The plans propose a wick drain within the infiltration basin. The wick drain consists of a 4-foot deep trench filled with 1 and 1/2 inch to 2-inch washed crushed stone. Based upon soil testing information associated with the septic system, the estimated seasonal high groundwater at the site is shallow, and the bottom of the wick drain will not have the required 2-foot offset to seasonal high groundwater. The depth of the wick drain needs to be revised to satisfy the required groundwater offset, alternatively, the wick drain could be revised to utilize clean sand that conforms to 310 CMR 15, AKA Title V Sand in lieu of stone. So this is a standard detail that we've developed, and it came from, I think it originally came from comments from the Department of Environmental Service in New Hampshire, and so this is a detail that becomes standard for our infiltration basins. It is not, the bottom of it is not considered where the infiltration occurs, the whole reason for the wick drain and its 4-foot depth is for frozen conditions. When you have those times of the year, you've gone through the winter, the ground is frozen, but the air temperature has now changed enough that it can rain, so we have rain, but frozen ground. You're not going to get water through your frozen bottom of your infiltration basin. So we have a 4-foot deep wick drain. The reason for the 4-foot depth is historically, the frost doesn't go lower than 4 feet, so it provides a hydraulic connection from the water on the bottom of the basin to the groundwater table, to make sure in those times of year that can occur, water is still getting out of the basin, so we don't have really a detention basin temporarily, and that, that came, you know, years ago, like I said, it was a review comment from the Department of Environmental Service, where they asked us to put in a column of stone for that sole purpose, so that's become a standard for us in our design. You know, so we, we would like to leave that, and we can discuss that, you know, further with Graves, if you'd like, I mean, if you want us to change it so it's, you know, less in-depth, that's fine, but that's the reason why we like to have that, is to make sure we have a hydraulic connection, you know, for those frozen conditions, but...
Can I ask our review engineer, Jeff Walsh, to weigh in on that?
Absolutely, sure, I'm on the spot.
I don't mind being on the spot, that's what I'm here for. I appreciate Anthony's explanation, and I can understand the reasoning behind it and Maine's desire to have it. Unfortunately, with Massachusetts DEP, especially in the land of septic systems, measurements for groundwater offset are taken from the bottom of the stone in a Title V system or septic system. Granted, this is not Title V, this is a stormwater application, but it comes from the same department, DEP. And I look at stone, stone is a very good conductor of water, it provides a hydraulic connection between the basin and the groundwater, as explained by Anthony. between the basin and the groundwater, as explained by Anthony. And, and unfortunately, with the intention of DEP stormwater standards that offset the groundwater, they want some filtering capacity between the infiltration facility and groundwater for pollutant removal. And to some extent, maybe it takes away a little bit of, um, the two-foot offset also accounts for some possible variation in actual groundwater conditions compared to observed groundwater conditions by modeling. The point is, my interpretation of this is that because of the hydraulic connection and the desire to have the infiltration capacity, the filtering capacity, there should be something other than the highly conductive stone. And I, in the world of septic systems, um, groundwater offsets are not measured from the sand fill. That was, and, and I appreciate the reasoning of looking for a more hydraulically permeable soil than what's out there. That was the purpose of it. And that was, that was why I thought that I would offer up coarse sand. Um, it, that takes away the two-foot offset groundwater and still, to a good extent, achieves the purpose of, of, um, trying to pass water. I will say also, um, in the septic, the septic systems, the infiltration basins that I look at, um, yes, in times of frozen earth, the water will not pass into the soil very quickly. However, if you have impounded water, that water is in fact going to warm the frost. And I've seen many an infiltration basin where you can see the ice laying on the bottom of the floor of the basin, the day, two days, three days after the water melted and drained down. The, it was cold enough that the ice formed, but then it does, the water will pass. So I, I don't think they have, um, a detrimental condition, um, by removing the stone. And I'd advocate for the two-foot offset to groundwater. Um, I have no problem with using a more permeable material than the native soils, um, but I would stay away from the stone.
So if they put in two feet of the, of the septic sand and then the stone, is that, does that meet the, the offset?
Actually, they'd still, they've got two and a half foot of offset to groundwater. So they basically can afford to have six inches deep of stone.
Okay.
And anything after that, they technically wouldn't have the two-foot offset to groundwater.
So are you able to accomplish, uh...
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, you know, we can, that's, it becomes preference. Like I said, that was a comment that was made to us, you know, years ago, and that's become our standard. We've never had a comment from DEP or anyone else about it since then. But absolutely, that's, you know, we have, you know, no issue changing. We could, you know, eliminate it altogether. It's just, that was, like I said, everyone, probably based on their own experience, maybe had that one instance where things were frozen solid and, you know, water came out of the spillway sooner than it was supposed to based upon the calculations. And so that, that became the standard in that, that instance. So, you know, we have no, no issue eliminating that if that's, you know, the preference of the town or review engineer. We can eliminate it altogether. It would just be that's, it just really becomes just those frozen conditions. That's the only thing you really have to, to watch out for. So, yeah. So we have no issue with, with that.
Okay.
Number 11, documentation needs to be submitted to support the sizing of the storm scepter proprietary stormwater treatment unit, i.e. TSS removal information and Mass DEP required calculations in accordance with standard method to convert, uh, to convert required water quality volume to a discharge rate for sizing flow-based manufactured proprietary stormwater treatment practices. So, yep, we can submit that. That's, you know, we, we looked at that. Um, off Topman, I believe, that when the calculation comes back, it's the flow that goes to that water quality unit is .1 CFS, so a very small amount. Uh, but we can, we can submit that information. No problem. That's, we'll add that to the, to the list.
Okay.
Twelve, the drainage analysis in the checklist for stormwater report contained in the stormwater management report needs to be stamped by a registered professional engineer.
No problem.
And then general comments. Thirteen, GEI understands that Mass Ave is under Mass DOT jurisdiction and that Mass DOT review the proposed access driveway connection and any work proposed within the right-of-way. Uh, nevertheless, sheet G1 proposes to excavate up to approximately two feet deep within Mass Ave right-of-way, um, approximate to a roadway horizontal curve and enlarge an existing depression for the purpose of enhanced stormwater conveyance. The excavation includes creating a one and a half to one slope only about seven feet from Mass Ave edge of pavement. In our opinion, the one and a half to one slope is too steep and the depression, the proposed 98 topographic contour should be located as far from Mass Ave pavement as reasonable possible. Yes. Yep, absolutely. Good, that was a good, good catch there. The contour was just shown too close. Very easy fix. We're going to, you know, slide that 98 contour a little further away. So we'll be back to a three-to-one slope. We've already kind of worked that out. It has no impact on, on anything else. So that was a, that was a good, that was a good catch there on that one. Absolutely. Fourteen, there is an existing swale located in the Mass Ave right-of-way that runs parallel with the street. The swale appeared by visual observation to be approximately two and a half feet deep as compared to the edge of pavement elevation. And Mass Ave is super elevated sloping down to the north. The proposed elevation information on sheet G1 shows that the driveway will have a low point, elevation 99.8 feet, approximately 20 feet off of Mass Ave edge of pavement. Then the driveway will rise at an initial grade of approximately 7.4% between the 100 and 102 contours. If the developed site is to be served even occasionally by low clearance vehicles, e.g. a low-bed semi-trailer, then the design engineer may wish to prepare a profile of the driveway and evaluate whether the vehicle's ability to enter the site without bottoming out on the pavement. And so just to... Go. Try and better understand it visually. So there's a swale that I mentioned there along Mass Ave. We want to maintain that. So you basically come in, you drop down a little bit, and then you go up into the driveway. So you have a, you have a bit of a belly there. Uh, and so we looked at trying to accommodate cars, pickup trucks. Um, we threw a bus on there. That was fine. Uh, box truck was fine. And an 18 wheeler was fine. You know, you have about six inches to a foot of clearance as it comes in, as it comes in there with that. We didn't look at, we could throw a low-bed trailer as you would say, transport large excavation equipment. We weren't designing for that. They don't have that. They don't have a low bed. Uh, I think, you know, historically, they may have a need for a low bed once every five years. The excavation equipment they have is all rubber retired. Most of the time, they drive it. They're, they're in Lunenburg. The work they're doing is in Lunenburg. So there's not much of a necessity to have to transport that. So we didn't design specific for that, that minor occurrence. My speculation is that a low bed probably would bottom out if you were trying to, to do that. They are very long. And by definition, whoop. So, but we didn't, we didn't design that for that. We were trying to, to minimize the steepness of the driveway, um, you know, such that we're right around eight and a half percent. We don't have to go too much steeper than that. So we have, you know, not a large transition to, to change that grade up into that. So we weren't designing for that, for that scenario. So in the event that they do need a flat, a low bed to pick up an equipment, it would, you know, what would end up happening is like you would see many times for construction equipment, big stuff like that, you park on the side of the road, you drive your excavator down, you load it up, and you drive off. Um, those infrequent times that they would need that. And then more likely than you have signage and a police detail. So again, where that's not part of the normal operation, that wasn't one of our design considerations.
Do you own an excavator that you use regularly? No. So...
They're all rubber.
Basically, we need one that would go to the site where it would be used, aside from construction of the building?
Right, which would actually probably save on transport costs. You know, say, all right, deliver it. You know, we need to, we need to rent a bigger machine at this site. You deliver it there instead of delivering it to their site and then having to haul it again.
And you have plates for all your loaders and backhoes and stuff too?
So very, very good comment. I was, you know, it's...
Are 13 and 14 tied together at all? Is there going to be any impact? Okay, there won't be any impact.
Yeah, no. So what 13 is...
Mm-hmm. Is that initial...
So right, right here, you know, tough to see on the small one. I need a couple of people. So these, these dark lines right here are, are contour lines in this case. This is 100, this is 98. So you can see the spacing of the contours anywhere else. That's basically a three-to-one slope. You see right here, they get really tight. Ends up when you calculate a little one and a half to one slope. So this 100 would stay where it is. This 98 would just curl away a little bit to get that, that three-to-one slope.
Okay.
Really has no, no change. It was a good, good pickup by, by Jeff on that. Absolutely. Okay. So that was, that was 14. I think it's, you know, we, we can, what we can still do on 14 is, um, we'll probably still go through the exercise. And, you know, low beds, they're not a standard size either. You know, everyone has a different low-bed trailer. Um, what I was planning on doing is probably going to a contractor that I know that has one, uh, that they own, go over and measure it and see what happens. I'm, I'm pretty sure it's, it's going to bottom out, you know, based on my experience. But, uh, be happy to go through the exercise. Like I said, we weren't designing for that, um, for that, that, uh, limited occurrence. Fifteen, the locust plan on sheet one must be revised to include a North Arrow. Also, the pre-wash map and post-wash map must be revised to include a North Arrow. No problem. The plans do not indicate the location of the existing proposed tree lines. This information must be provided. Of concern are trees along the northern and southern property lines within approximately 300 feet of Mass Ave. No problem. We can, we can add that. The, uh, the northern, southern property lines. Yeah, so, so basically, you know, one is just clear for car path that already exists in here. So our work isn't really going much beyond. This is already cleared for the power lines. And, uh, our, our new edge of trees will basically follow what I've highlighted in green here, our edge of our contour. So, and this is given idea in relation to a butter. You have a house here. Roughly, there, clear area stops above here. This lot is very long and goes way back. This is all wooded. We're about 20 feet off with the edge of disturbance there. And then it curls around. All clear here. There's a, you know, clear area up in here. This is a 50-foot mill build zone for conservation, uh, jurisdiction. So, you know, staying out of that. And this is basically stays, stays at it. But we can absolutely add that.
Add that to the plan. It's no problem.
And, uh, general comment, 17, GEI did not review sheets S1 through S3, the soil absorption system. We understand the soil absorption system will be reviewed by the Lunenburg Board of Health or its agent. Uh, and we have submitted to the show of Board of Health. We've gotten a preliminary round of, of comments from Jim Griffey on that. And we'll be, we'll be working those out with them. And what's that?
Okay. Uh, more questions in the board building up right now before we get into waivers?
I got a quick question. Is there, I'm sorry.
I'll go right ahead.
Was there any kind of lighting plan? Because I don't see any lights called on.
Yep, so it's on, um, so that was one of the, one of the waivers is a photometric plan. We asked for a waiver on that. Uh, but we, we do show locations of lights on, on the plans. We didn't do a separate plan for that. They are shown on the proposed layout plan, which is four sheets in. It's P1. And I have it up here too.
Oh, I didn't see it. So light bulbs. Okay.
So basically, um, most of the lighting is going to be wall-mounted lights around the building, you know, to, that's the area that really needs to be illuminated. So we have lights over each of the overhead doors. Um, we have both garage doors and main doors. Light at the entrance. And then a light pole in the rear here, and a light pole here to kind of intersect as you kind of come up and make your way into the parking area. So, um, added a note to the plan, all outdoor lights are in dark sky compliant and installed in such a manner as to prevent objectionable light and glare across property lines. Note B, all LED light fixtures shall be in the range of warm light, uh, warm white. Will be filtered LEDs of CCT, it's less than 3,000 K or SS, P U A U, less than 1.2. I basically took that right from, right from your bylaw.
Right, okay.
Make sure that was...
I didn't see it on the, I was looking for something that was specific to lights. I didn't catch that. Thank you.
So, just to point and reference the building, the closest property line is 110 feet away from the building there. The, the edge of the paved area is 50 feet away from the property line. And again, this part of the neighborhood property is all, is all wooded too. Their, their area here is probably more like 20 feet away from where they have grown the valley guard.
And they're about what, 20, you're about 20 feet above them?
Yeah. Yep, that sounds, sounds pretty close there. Let's see.
Seems like...
Uh, more, more, what's in? 10, 10, 10 feet or so higher.
10 feet higher, okay.
10 to 12 higher, yeah. You know, it's the, you know, from the back of their lot. Is their lot slopes up a little bit, a little bit too? Uh, you know, from the front, you know, from Mass Ave, we're about 20 feet higher than Mass Ave.
Chair, in regards to the parking, um, you have 14 on here. And then, but if you go by the formula for our bylaw, it'll be less than that. Um, is 14 adequate or...
So, so...
Fit your needs? I mean, if, I'd prefer not just to go by the equation that we have.
Yes, we have way more than the bylaw. Um, and so historically, they, they have five employees. Um, and, you know, so it's, you know, so you have five, you know, for that. And sometimes they have their own vehicles, the trucks that you're driving out. And you come in and leave, you know. Um, and so the, you have, you know, visitors that come in to pay their bills basically is, you know, what do you have at your facility now? Six parking spaces, maybe?
Maybe.
You know, and that's, that's always been, been adequate. I don't think you've ever had an issue there. You know, so 14 is, is more, more than enough.
Right.
For their need, for sure.
Just want to make sure that...
Absolutely.
You don't just go by the bylaw and it doesn't fit your needs and you got people parking all over the place.
Yeah. I mean, another nice thing, if for some reason you happen to have a huge meeting, your water commissioner's meeting. And that would be at night. So they wouldn't be during their operation. So if for some reason they had a huge meeting, you know, which you don't usually have, I know the meetings I've been to, I've been the only one. You know, maybe another place in there. But we do have paid all around the building where these instances would be operation hours. You got plenty of room. You know, you're not going to have people trying to park on Mass Ave. Plenty of space. If you had a need for overflow, you could, you could accommodate that if need be. But, uh, historically, they haven't needed, um, more than that.
Okay. Does all the equipment you have going to fit in the garage or is that the plan? Okay. Um, and then I guess...
Oops, sorry.
Sorry, just a couple of small things. Um, are you planning on having any signage?
Yep.
On Mass Ave or...
So we give a force sign right down here at the entrance, showing it 20 feet off of, off of the right-of-way, which I believe is in conformance with the zone. While we've shown that there. Don't have specifics on the sign. If I had, you know, specifics, we would have submitted that. But, um, hasn't been determined exactly, you know, what it looks like. Um, you know, there's been, you know, just, everyone has a different opinion. You know, you know, you could do a nice decorative or maybe they can, um, something with a message board to show, hey, water commissioner meeting, you know, something similar to me what the high school has. But that hasn't been determined. You know, once, once that is, we'd have to submit that to the billing inspector and it may also, may need to come to you guys too, you know, for that, for that review as well.
So that's going to be a follow-up submission for the sign?
Yeah.
Yeah, I brought it up just...
Absolutely.
Saying you want to do one revision, so let's get everything on to that.
Yeah, well, we don't have, we don't, if we haven't engaged in a sign company, you know, to have a sign. You know, so it's, we have a location for it. Um, you know, but that could maybe, maybe it could be a condition, you know, that, you know, once the sign is determined, you know, come back to the board for review of the sign, you know, something like that.
Yeah. Uh, do you have anticipated hours of operation or just, I know you'll have emergencies and things of that nature.
7:30 to 4.
7:30 to 4.
That's it for me for now. Actually, um, do you have any, uh, solar panels? I mean, do you have any, uh, it seems like it would be a good candidate for that. They've got a lot of open space.
On the roof.
Okay. Great. And that's it.
Okay. So is the temporary stockpile area where you're going to put your snow?
No, that was, that's for erosion control.
The snow storage is shown in this sheet, the proposed layout plan. So the, the kind of clouded areas is where the snow storage is set to sure. Over this area here, along the...
here, along the side of driveway, obviously, in the area. That stockpile area, that's part of the erosion control plan, and so...
It's on T1.
Oh, yeah, what? That's the snow?
P1 or G1?
So that's for during construction. As the work is continuing on.
Ah, okay.
The intent would be to kind of stockpile some of the excess material.
All right, so that's just for construction?
This is just in the erosion control, exactly.
Okay.
The snow storage is shown on that, this layout plan here, the cloud areas.
Okay, and what's being stored in the material storage bins?
So that's part of their typical operations, where, you know, construction-wise, you're gonna need crushed stone, gonna need sand, what's some of the stuff that you have there? Uh, graded base. Created, yeah, loam, maybe? Loam. Yeah, so basically, things that they use as part of their, you know, the construction needs to do that.
And so the runoff from the materials that's stored there when it gets all drenched with rain, that just goes across the driveway into the?
Yep, into the swale, and then into the, into the stormwater basin, through the four bay, and then into the...
Because you said the driveway was pitched forward, or?
So, so basically, it's, it's like, you know, a bridge line like this. So, this water sheath to this side, this water sheath to that side. So, you know, water falling on these areas would make its way to the grass swale. Here, you get some filtering through this grass swale, it's a pretty flat swale, and then makes its way into the four bay, again, trapping some particulates there, going, making its way through a stone berm, and then eventually into the infiltration.
Do you know if we have any butters here?
I was just about to ask for any public comment, including the waivers. Anybody here to speak on for or against the project?
Not that, I didn't want to look for problems or anything, but if there is a lighting situation, just because I'm worried about the elevation change, if there is a problem with that neighbor down the road, you're okay with dealing with that, with maybe plantings or something along that line?
Yeah, like I said, again, it's, the nature of the way the site's laid out, where we are up higher, we're also way, way back.
Okay.
These being wall-mounted, you know, being dark sky compliant, the nature of that is they're pointed down. So it's, you're really gonna be illuminating, you know, this, this area, and there's still gonna be trees and everything.
Okay.
Left on, up this area here.
All right.
But, you know, the other, the nice thing about the Lunenburg Water District is their current facility over on Pierce Ave is in a residential neighborhood, more so than this, you know, so they're used to being a good neighbor with residences, so, you know, we don't expect any issues, you know, it's, that's what's nice, they're not moving in from an industrial area, they're used to being in a neighborhood, you know, like I said, more of a neighborhood than what this is.
Would you guys like to get into the waivers now?
Sure.
Sure.
If you'd like, I can read the letter, or you can do?
Your letter, so why don't you read it?
No problem. I'll just skip right to the, right to the meat of it. So, and this doesn't include some of the ones we may be adding, if possible. Board rules and regulations for site plan approval and special permits. Section 4.1 F.2, plan scale 1 inch equals 40. Waiver requested to utilize a scale of 1 inch equals 30 to improve the plan readability. So basically, we tried to zoom in a little more, I know it's, even myself, I draw the plans and I get lost myself, and I should know where everything is. So we try and make the scale as small as we can, so it's easier for reviewers and contractors to read the information. So, we went to a 1 inch equals 30, we were able to show the entire site, so that's why we were asking to go to that, to that scale.
Well, I'd like to, the board, like to just have us go over and vote on these one at a time, just to keep them, so we don't pile them up at the end.
Okay, so the first one we're taking is off the Graves report.
Nope. This is in my letter.
It's the one-sheet letter.
Single sheet letter.
Oh, the single sheet, okay, sorry. All fine, great, thank you.
So is there anybody from the public who has an issue with us waiving the 1 to 40 to 1 to 30 scale? Anybody from the board like to make a motion?
Well, my only question on the 1 to 30 scale versus on the 40, if we went to the 1 to 40 scale, that would show the surrounding neighbors' houses, correct?
Not sure. It may show, may not show all of them, you know, we may have to go to a 50 scale. I don't know, I haven't looked at that yet. I don't know for sure. You know, it will see more on a 40 scale. You'll see more of the surrounding area, but now as you get to some of the other plans, you know, some of those plans that are a little more, you know, detailed, that have a lot more information on it, you know, you just gotta start changing the text size, and it just gets a little more difficult for people to read. So that's why we all, we can try and go to a smaller scale, just to make it easier for people to read.
Wonder if they...
That kind of rolls into another waiver, we may or may not ask for, maybe we also add a plan to the plan set that zooms out whatever is needed.
Right, that's what I was gonna ask you, is there, is there a way we could just add a page that is a zoom out that does show the surrounding property?
Yeah, absolutely, we can, we can do that, yeah. So that would be kind of, that other waiver we're possibly talking about, that might be a way to do that, where we show like a, just an overall surrounding area plan. It may not be 1 inch equals 40, it may have to be 1 inch equals 50. So, I don't know if we need to discuss that and make that as part of the waiver.
I was gonna move that we allow the waiver for the plan scale to be 1 inch equals 30, with the inclusion of a single drawing page that has a site overview that shows the surrounding properties and house locations.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Section 4.1 F.22, photometric plan, waiver requested. Proposed lighting is intended to be dark sky compliant to illuminate the immediate building and surrounding pavement of the project. The closest abutting property to the building is greater than 100 feet. So, you know, we're asking for a waiver on the photometrics, I don't think it's gonna show much that you can't deduce from the location of the site, so just asking for a waiver on that.
Any input from the public on the photometric plan? Seeing none. All I'd say is that whoever makes the motion, if we would include that the details of note A and B on P1 are met, because I feel that having those on there accomplishes what we're looking for in the photometric plan to begin with. So that would be note A, that he mentioned earlier, all outdoor lighting should be dark sky compliant, and note B, that all LED fixtures should be in the warm white.
I'm not sure if you guys have standard conditions, but I would say no issue with putting them right in the standard conditions, make those two conditions in the permit, too. So it's, I always like to put as much as I can on a plan, because, you know, sometimes, you know, a contractor doesn't have the permit right in his back pocket, that's why I like to put as much as I can right on that plan. Redundancy is good.
Mr. Chair, my only question is, is the only, are you only, I'm only seeing two pole-mounted lights? Is those the only two?
Yeah, that's our intent, yeah, exactly, yeah.
The building-mounted, I would assume, can be positioned, or whatever.
Yeah, so they're gonna be right above each of the doors, kind of shielded down to really... You know, really just illuminate right along, along the lonely areas. Pole here is to help, this will be, people could try and make attorney movements, and this is another area to help kind of pick up some of that. The intent is to try and keep this on the other side, away from the closest abutting property.
I would move that we accept the waiver for the photometric plan based upon the details in P1, calling out the requirements that the planning board has for, with regards to the photometric plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Section 4.1 H, impact reports. Level of service analysis, waiver requested. Due to the historical low number of trips per day of the project use, the favorable site distances, and required review by Mass DOT, a waiver of this analysis is requested. So that's one of those specific to level of service, you know, basically looking at, you know, the delay time, people coming in and out of that driveway. So, again, like I said, due to the low use, and we have good site distances, I can... It's nice along the outside of the curve here, some good straightaways. We have greater than 500 feet this way, and greater than 900 feet this way. And that's actually, we actually made on the plans, we have, that's on the layout plan as well, 900 feet, 500 feet. For those reasons, we're asking for a waiver on the level of service analysis.
Any input from the board?
Public.
Public, anybody? No? Their motion?
Take it away.
Actually, we would be waiving all of them, the community impacts, trip generation, and level of service.
All of the sections.
Or we can take it as a group, if you...
Whatever, yeah, I'd be happy to read them off, it's like, where was easier for this?
I don't see why we shouldn't just do all three of them.
I didn't know if we'd take, someone would take exception to one and not the other, but...
But if somebody waives 4.1H, then it waives all of them, correct? If the motion was to waive 4.1H, they would be waiving...
If the motion was, you could waive varying sections of it, depending on, there may be some projects where you want to waive some portion and not another portion.
All right, so I'll move that we waive the level of service analysis, trip generation, and community impacts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Trip generation.
So I can go through those, you just waived them all. But I'd be happy to go through it and discuss them, if you'd like to. Trip generation, waiver requested. Due to the use being so specific to the Lunenburg Water District, and that they have an existing operation with known trip expectations, a waiver from the use of the ITE manual is requested. Community impacts, waiver requested. Due to the nature of the project use, with overall low expected impacts, as mentioned in previous sections, a waiver of this section is requested. They all kind of went together.
Yes.
That was it for my letter, and then there was a, something that we...
So we talked about the datum.
Yeah, so the datum one, you know, asked for a waiver on that, and it sounded like you may be okay with the vertical part, but not necessarily the horizontal.
Yes. That sums it up.
I don't want to speak for you, but that was the impression that I got.
Yeah, so, I believe, at least from my standpoint, anyway, we'd be willing to waive the vertical datum, but would require a location of the horizontal datum.
Okay, so we can put that on the Mass State plane coordinate system, so you can orient that to your GIS, and then, would you need me to submit that in writing on the waiver for the NAVD 88 datum? Or is that something that you could vote on tonight?
Would you like to see that, Adam?
I think that you can do it tonight.
Okay. So any other thoughts on the, any motion?
So, so, this is, how do we phrase the set point, set reference points for, because when we talked about this, you said that you could use that datum, identify a couple of set reference points, identify the elevations of those, so they give a...
Looking at this plan, you have no idea where this is in space. So what you would do is, we could pick some control points, call away some good ones to do survey-wise. There are, there are highway bounds. There's a highway bound here, there's a highway bound here, I believe. So that'll be one good control point, because it's, that's an important point of reference to leave and leave undisturbed, anyway. So, we could, you know, take our GPS equipment, set up on that, shoot that, we have coordinates for that. You can't just do one point, you can't, you can't rotate off of one point. So then, and we'll again, choose some other orientation, you know, maybe, I think it's my eyes out here, other property corners, so we would pick, you know, pick points, we don't want to say, you know, top of this hill, you can't really recreate that. So we would pick some good, good points that someone could recreate. I think ideally, it'll be probably monumentation on the road, and I believe is an iron rod that exists in this property corner, but we probably just pick a couple of those points, use our GPS equipment to put coordinates on that, and then right on the plan, we would put Mass Highway Bound, north 500, east 5,000, you know, and now you're on that coordinates, so someone could utilize that. To then basically bring that in and rotate that in to your Mass grid.
Okay.
Can you use the poles?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you know, so it's with the poles, you know, you might, so a lot of times we use poles for vertical benchmarks, you can bang a spike in a pole, you could do that, too. You know, but usually, when we're trying to do, you know, corridor-type stuff, we'll put nails in pavement, you know, because then you could literally set up, you could set an instrument right on top of it. A nail and a pole, you can't set an instrument on it, because the pole's in the way. So a lot of times, we try and do monuments like that, if they're available, but sometimes they're not, and then you have to start finding things that, you know, sometimes fire hydrants are good ones, but those sometimes get moved. We try and pick points that are structures or known points that are less apt to move. So I think we would start seeing if there's available existing survey monumentation that we could put coordinates on, because that could be reproduced based on property plans and things like that. That's what we would shoot for anyways.
So, can I just ask, is our Graves representative, would, if we had three of these reference points, would that satisfy the need for this datum overlay?
How many reference points do you say?
If we had three, how many reference points would we need?
They need two, but I recommend three, because if there's a bust in one of them, usually can figure out which one it is.
All right, so then, I would, I would waive, what was this? This is the requirement for North American Datum 1983, provided there are a minimum of three reference points documented on the, on the plan that referenced those detailed locations. Is that...
Well, that's suffice.
So actually, I don't think you need to grant the waiver.
Well...
If we're putting three reference points for the Mass State plane, then essentially, it would be on Mass State plane for horizontal. Vertical, we're asking for a waiver from the vertical datum component, so, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think...
So you're agreeing to do that, and then, right.
I see. So we still have the vertical.
So I think, so we would, we would do it on the Mass State plane horizontal, and I'm glad we talked about it, a minimum of three points being shown to satisfactorily comply with that. So really, the waiver becomes on the vertical datum.
Okay. Would you like to amend your motion, Ken?
Well, it, I mean, the details that I provide becomes irrelevant, because the, I'll retract the motion, because we won't need an exception if we get those reference points. The vertical datum being missing, I don't know how to mitigate that, we either just say...
You just waive the requirement. The requirement.
Yeah.
Which you did on a project very recently.
There's no negative impact of that, or?
No.
Okay. Then we'll just waive the requirement for the NAVD 88 compliance.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. And I believe the other item we talked about was the houses and driveways of the abutting properties, but if you're gonna provide that sheet...
We can do that plan, if that's what you prefer, absolutely, we can, we can do the plan.
Okay. Just one other question, so we're clear, are we, with the wick drain, are you doing the sand, or eliminating it altogether?
Just gonna ask the exact same question.
I don't know that we need to determine that tonight.
Okay.
I don't expect that you're voting on the project tonight, are you?
No, I was just curious what they were gonna do.
Just curious what the...
That's a reasonable request, just...
Yeah.
Because a wick drain does sound like a good idea.
It does.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Does it work if it's made with septic sand?
Not as well, but better than, as Jeff mentioned, better than, you know, as I say, an existing till, you know, so it's, so we'll, we'll look at that and consider and see what we...
Any other questions, or we'd like to touch on the architectural elevations at all tonight?
Another overhead door in the back, and a couple of main doors. There. And then, actually, just a, you can see it if you look at the point on here, this is their communications, communications with their various employees, or antenna, that they have now, that they're resisting.
The metal roof?
Yes. Metal roof, correct, yes.
Adam, are there any particular bylaw standards for antennas, or?
I don't believe so. I think that this, where it's public service, would be sort of pulled out of that. Do you put a police repeater on your antenna?
Also have one. No one's ever talked about the one on the roof. We did just recently put up two towers, that was three years ago. We weren't commercial, like a cellular, so it bypassed the bylaws on the suburban area and was that so much open?
That's usually how it works, if it's not cellular, if it's a radio antenna based on public service, it kind of skates by, because, I mean, how tall is that? It looks like it's probably about 50 feet tall?
Uh, we had to have it nine, that height of it, because we just allowed it to five on the hatch and the door. I think it's, we're looking around 60.
Sixty.
Any questions about the architectural elevations? Typically, or lately, we've been asking for prospective views of the proposed projects, but for your site, whereas it's pretty far off the road, I'm not overly concerned, as I would be with other projects that have been before us of having that. I don't know what the hell else feels.
No, I think they break it up pretty good with the dormer in the front, and what's going to be facing the road.
Yeah, that's why, you know, that was one of the preliminary challenges, was how to orient the building. We looked at it, it may have been a little easier to construct the site if we had turned it this way, but we kind of wanted the, we wanted the office to be the thing you see from Mass out, and as you're driving up, we didn't want you to come up and see garage doors. So, that's why we tried to, you know, it may be a little more cost-effective to turn it the other way, but this was the look that they wanted. They wanted it to be kind of non-intrusive to the people driving by, come up, see the front door of the office. So, trying to hide that mass and kind of behind.
Do you have an anticipated flow of vehicles about which way they're going to go around the building, or just...
Uh, not a whole lot, yeah.
Whatever works the way they...
Yeah, it's, some days it's very minimal, some days it's pretty busy, but it's never, never a lot, like you said.
No, I just meant which way you would, are they going to pull in one side of the garage? I know you have a...
Around the site, yeah. Probably more likely, and I don't want to speak to you guys, but, you know, for their equipment, for their, the man, the people working, probably going to drive straight through. You know, this is a parking area, so more than likely, you're going to be driving around to the back of the garage. That's why, you know, the material base over here, boom, you're right in, and then you're right out.
I think there are actually arrows on the plan for directional trip. On the one I saw, I thought...
Customers, more than likely, if you have the parking spaces, front doors here, more than likely, they're going to pop in, park right here, you know, some may want to just jump into these spaces here. That's the expected law anyway.
Mr. Chair, this is projects in the commercial district, if I'm not mistaken. The maximum height's 55 feet unless approved by the planning board and the fire chief. So, at some point, they'd have to submit the design height of that tower, and then, this board could approve it, and with the approval of the fire chief, they could exceed the 55. So, again, I think where we're talking about something so far back, and where it's a communications tower as opposed to a building that's up at that height, I don't necessarily see that it would be a big issue, but it is something that you'd have to look at, and I don't imagine the fire chief would have an issue. I don't think that there's a life or safety issue with a communications tower, as there might be with a 70 or 80-foot building of some sort.
So that should be an item to talk about when they come back?
So, I mean, that may be, because, you know, we're not going to have a design tomorrow on an antenna, I assume. Would that be something that could be a condition of approval?
It could be, I guess my suggestion would be, ask for what you think it will be, and don't go any higher. So, in, you know, I mean, you have a general idea of what it might be. You don't know the exact height. So if you think it might be 60 feet, and you come back and say, listen, we're going to say it's 70 feet, and you build it, and it's 64 feet, then, you're under 70. If you come and say 60, and it's 61 and a half feet, then, you know, we get into all sorts of... So my suggestion is, ask for the biggest thing you think you will put out there, and you may want to contact Chief Sullivan and just have a conversation with him about what he thinks, and what he thinks is reasonable, and just put that all together.
Okay.
What's the height before you have to put a light or anything on it?
That, it depends where you are.
Say the power lines, and, helicopter.
So it's, so it's...
Yes, right about that. Depends on your proximity to a flight path, and...
Well, I was just, because it is in the residential area, so I wasn't sure if it...
When you put up a project, so the FAA can confirm.
Yeah.
They tell you, you need a light or not. A water tank's very close to that, which doesn't need lights, so I don't anticipate any lights on the...
Okay. Any questions or comments from the public? Anything else from the board before they go home to revise the plan?
I just have one general comment with the Lunenburg Water District. I know you had to put the trees in regard to the parking, probably, but I'd just like to see that beefed up a little. That's just me.
You mean more plantings, or you mean the...
We have things in this island here.
You mean more...
They're just not identified what the, like, they have plants here.
You mean more detail on the plan?
No, these are just descriptions of deciduous trees and, and if it's true, they're not, they don't state how many of each, or...
Tree, you know, is going to go in each location. We haven't worked out those specifics yet. You know, the intent is to have trees up around this area, a couple of trees at the entrance, and then bushes, and probably going to have some planting.
Right, I'm sure they would like it to look nice, just with some planting beds, so I'm not looking for a tropical paradise, so just maybe some landscaping around the sign would be nice.
You looking for more detail on the plans, or more actual, you don't think it's sufficient?
Both, I'd like to see some plantings, but again, that's just my...
What's the, if we show, if we show some trouble area around there, so you think we need more?
If it was identified on the plan, I'd be able to give you a better indication of, but you, on your...
Well, it's listed on L1 as the locations of the trees, but it doesn't say what specific types they are.
Right.
We haven't decided which, a lot of times it'll be, you know, work with the landscaper, you know, at the time we're doing construction, and, you know, let's put this kind of bush here.
So you get six trees and five bushes according to the plan.
Right, and I think for that size of a site, 11 shrubs is not adequate, but again, it's, I'm not expecting hundreds of thousands of dollars in landscaping, just to dress it up a little bit.
Right, we looked at, you know, this isn't shopping plaza, it's the Lunenburg Water District, where you basically have the water department who puts in water pipes, suspects water, and have people come and paint it or build. So, you know, we weren't looking to beautify it, we're not on top of the road, you're not going to see any of this until you're driving up to it. So, you know, we weren't looking to spend, go overboard, you know, we wanted to do something, obviously we wanted it to look nice, but, you know, to have more bushes than that, you stand to put a lot of bushes in a small area, you know, I don't know if that's, that's good, too. So, we can, we can, we can try to do a little more to be able to do. We thought this was adequate for the use, the distance being so far away from the road, this was around the top of the road, we had constant traffic, you know, you want to have a nice, beautiful looking thing around the road. You're driving up your apartment...
It's not a deal breaker, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
It's on our main thoroughfare, I just, I'm sure you want it to look nice as well.
The power lines, they...
Main thoroughfare, 500 feet from the road.
The power lines do grow up, you know, over time, the thick it's grown, and then, they come in and clear it out. You're going to have a lot of variation in what you can see and what you can't see from the road.
Okay, if there's no more questions for tonight, is there, Adam, a time we would like to put them on for continuing the public hearing?
I don't know how quickly they'd be able to turn the information around. It looks as if our next two meetings are relatively open, May 8th and May 22nd.
Any preference from the applicant?
I mean, I think we'd like to keep moving on as quickly as possible. I think a lot of these items are more, like you had mentioned earlier, you know, typos, clarifications, and then just getting some supplemental information to Graves for them to review. I think most of this, we could probably have, you know, information back to Graves and the town for Monday. I would expect we'd be able to do that. So that'll be a week before the meeting. I'm not sure if that's adequate time, and maybe, I don't know if Jeff can even answer that question right now, but maybe we try and shoot for that, that next meeting, and if, if it's not sufficient, everyone didn't have enough time, we continue it again to the following meeting, if, you know, if you'd entertain that. I know if it's not very busy, maybe we could try and do that.
Any input, Jeff?
I normally ask for two weeks turnaround, but there's not a lot of heavy lifting on our part for follow-up review. I could probably turn it around in about a week. It would just mean that, given the schedule, you'd be getting a letter close to the day of the meeting. They weren't make or break issues for the project, they were, we did discuss in detail the things I was most concerned about, and I understand they're going to move forward fixing them, but I still need a little bit of time to look at them and just, more importantly, just, I can't drop what I'm doing and just jump right on, but I will turn it around for the board quickly.
Thanks.
So I guess, from my end, I can, I can live with the 8th, I'll make it work.
And I appreciate that, I'm in the same boat probably he is. It's very busy. I appreciate you, you know, trying to do the best, and I think we'd like to continue on that process, and if it doesn't happen, I know how things work, but at least ask for us to be on the next meeting, to give us the opportunity to try and do that, you know, especially if you don't have a very busy meeting, and hopefully we can wrap it up, and if not, you know, at the very least, we'll be, should be all set and done, you know, for the next meeting, in case anything else comes up, you know, for that, so...
It basically comes down to whether the board's comfortable with receiving peer review information either the Friday or day of the meeting.
But the other thing, if I can add, save, it's not enough time, and I understand that and appreciate that, at least gives us an opportunity to talk about it with you. Instead of, instead of it being the first time you hear it two meetings from now, and then, oh geez, you know, maybe we should look at something else, so now we're going to another meeting. Maybe you don't feel comfortable at the next meeting, but at least we can talk about it, and maybe you leave us with some more direction. Now, geez, we want a little more information at that. It gives us that extra opportunity, so at the next, the meeting after the next one, hopefully we can come in and we've satisfied the board in Graves, so that it's basically almost just come in, you know, conditions, and we're done. That's what I'd ask, if you consider that.
So, well, normally on more contentious issues, I'd like to make sure that we, the next public hearing would be the real one, but, whereas, I don't see a big outpouring here for these things. If you were to slip a little bit on the date, I don't think it'd be the end of the world for anybody. So I'm comfortable with the 8th, if the rest of the board is...
I am as well.
I'm fine with it.
6:35, Adam, on the 8th?
6:30, yeah.
Okay.
Do we have to make a motion on that, or is it just...
Yes, we do.
Please.
I would move that we continue the public hearing for 496 Massachusetts Avenue until May 8th, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it, and all the comments, and Jeff, thank you very much for everything you've done so far, we appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, on to our second public hearing of the night, the board warrant article for annual town meeting, the marijuana moratorium.
You're ready.
Thanks.
Thank you.
The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April 24th, 2017, 6:35 PM, in the Joseph Wada Meeting Room, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass, 01462, to amend the protective bylaw of the town of Lunenburg by adding Section 4.18. temporary moratorium on the sale and distribution of recreational marijuana, and amend the table of contents to reflect the same. Copies are on file in the planning office.
Alright, so you folks have seen this at least once before, this little bit of modification to it, some of the language was taken out, some of it was sort of noodled around with after consultation with counsel. What was submitted to the warrant did drop half a sentence in Section 4184, and that has been added into what you see tonight, so there'll need to be an amendment on the floor, just to complete that sentence, and to strike the double comma in 4183. Those are, as a moderator, I used to work with, let's say, Scrivener's errors, but essentially what we're looking to do is prohibit the location of marijuana, recreational marijuana-related uses from now to December of 2018, or such time that the town has undertaken a thoughtful and informed planning process to add language to our zoning bylaws that would permit them in areas where they were felt to be appropriate. And it would be whichever comes earlier. So we can't bury our head in the sand and say, oh, we're not going to do this until 2025, because we'll be in prime time on January 1st of, actually, I think this goes to November, so it would be December 1st of 2018. So this would allow us to not get rolled over by whatever the state regulatory body puts together, and allow us to craft our zoning regulations, definitions, and use a thought process based on their regulations to regulate those uses in town.
So we did a pretty good job of beating this around in our last meeting, but is there any, any new comment from the board on this one, before we go to public comment?
My only question probably be for Adam, in 4.18.3...
and to strike the double comma in four one eight three, those are, as a moderator, I used to work with, let's say, Scrivener's errors, but essentially what we're looking to do is prohibit the location of marijuana, recreational marijuana-related uses from now to December of two thousand eighteen, or such time that the town has undertaken a thoughtful and informed planning process to add language to our zoning bylaws that would permit them in areas where they were felt to be appropriate, and it would be whichever comes earlier, so we can't bury our head in the sand and say, oh, we're not gonna do this until twenty twenty-five, because we'll be in prime time on January first of, actually, I think this goes to November, so it would be December first of two thousand eighteen, so this would allow us to not get rolled over by whatever the state regulatory body puts together, and allow us to craft our zoning regulations, definitions, and use a thought process based on their regulations to regulate those uses in town.
So we did a pretty good job of beating this running around in our last meeting, but is there any, any new comment from the board on this one, before we go to public comment?
My only question probably be for Adam, in four point one eight point three, it says, the town hereby adopts a temporary moratorium on the use of land or structures for recreational marijuana establishments, does that include onsite consumption?
I would have to believe that it includes anything that has to do with recreational marijuana.
Okay.
And if you look at our-
If you wanted to open a cigar bar for marijuana, that would be covered under it.
Yes, one, again, I'm sort of making some inferences here, but one can believe that any sale or use of recreational marijuana will be controlled through the state process in some faculty, what I will say also, though, is my understanding of the way that the referendum was written, and I haven't read through all of the bills currently on the legislative docket, but in order to consume onsite, the town would have to, through referendum vote, adopt that as a reasonable or as a, as an allowed use in town, and that referendum vote needs to be done during a state election, which would be November of two thousand eighteen, so regardless of what the laws and regulations are, that we, this moratorium would be up at or about the time that that would be a, a use that could be implemented, and that would be barring any legislative changes to the law, but my understanding is they're looking to be more strict as opposed to less strict.
So you couldn't have, like, with this moratorium, you couldn't have, like, you couldn't, you couldn't advertise your places like a B Y O B?
No, I, my understanding is that there's nowhere currently that you could legally B Y O-
Bud.
B Y O B, sure.
Whatever.
Because it's not, it's legal to possess it and consume it privately, but I don't believe that an establishment can permit you to use it, and I also believe that the smoking of it falls into similar categories to, like, the smoking of cigarettes, as far as where you can do it publicly.
Yeah, okay.
And I know that there's, I mean, there's a lot of gray area and variance, and I know a lot of towns have adopted general laws that prohibit the consumption in public, I don't believe Lunenburg has that on the books.
No, the chief of police tried to do it a few-
Yeah, I think that was the town meeting that got abandoned, because it was the first really nice Saturday, and all of a sudden, there was like twenty people, and someone called them on it.
Just to play devil's advocate, so if somebody wanted to open up, say, like, a wellness center, or something, it would fall under possibly a healthcare use?
We already have the medical-
Right, that's what, that's what I mean.
Well, if it were, if, if they were permitted through the Department of Public Health, then they fall under the medical bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I think we get into a lot, we can only legislate so much, we do define cultivator, establishment, product manufacturer, products testing facility, retailer, accessory, so I think when you get into private clubbing, I think we get into legal gray areas, and I think that becomes a council issue.
Well-
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Ken.
I just, one of the questions that I had, I thought I, I asked this last time, but maybe I didn't, but, we have these definitions in here, but we don't say how they pertain to the term recreational marijuana establishments and marijuana retailers, and the, the moratorium is on recreational marijuana establishments and marijuana retailers, which may or may not include these definitions by this document, so you can argue that a manufacturer is neither an establishment or a retailer.
Well, we define establishment, a marijuana cultivator, marijuana testing facility, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related business, within those same definitions.
Oh, so we have, okay, cultivator, test, oh, okay, so it's-
So the, those definitions are to dial in what would fall into each of those components, and then the establishment becomes another overarching definition that encompasses all of those subdefinitions.
Okay, I get it.
Okay, so, just one more time, real quick, 'cause I've got this, my head's wicked foggy.
It's like over, overarching categories and then sub-
Yes.
Okay, would've been easier if we drew it that way, but that's okay, I, I get it now, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But you can establish a cigar bar, correct?
No. Well, a cigar bar?
Yeah, like tobacco cigars?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but you cannot allow someone to come in and smoke the joint?
I don't believe so, that's not my understanding of, of something that's currently legal.
If you didn't sell it to them, you didn't sell it to them, and it's there for their own consumption, as long as you have that designated area for smoking, they can't smoke it there.
I, I can't give you a definitive answer on that.
Okay.
I don't know that there's any, there's plenty of people who will, I don't know that anybody is correct.
Okay. I just, you know, wanted to point out, because it seems like that's not covered in here, but that's, no, I don't know how important that is at this point, because we're gonna be working on it anyway.
Well, you could add a use clause.
You could, but-
Marijuana establishment.
The use portion would be, so, in, in David's instance, I think we're looking more at a general type bylaw, because they're not saying, hey, come buy your pot and smoke it here, they're not saying, bring your pot and smoke it here, he's saying, you know, someone walks in, sits down to talk to Greg, who's smoking a cigar, whips out a joint and starts smoking it, that's not, that's not a use, that's an action, and actions are generally covered under general bylaws, so if that bylaw that the chief had proposed had made it to the floor of town meeting and had been passed, that would cover that person, they would not be allowed to do that.
Okay.
I think his was more towards public consumption.
Well, that's public, though. But public is anywhere that's not your own private residence.
Like, when they outlawed smoking in restaurants and everything else.
People started opening private clubs.
Well, you could, you could go to the Franco American Club, you can light up a cigarette wherever you want, because it's considered a private club, but it's also open basically to the public, I mean-
Sure, I, I think-
You have to be technically sponsored by a member or a member, but-
I think you get into getting more gray areas like that.
I'm just trying to avoid a little-
I would assume that those clubs would, would, would be allowed to go in and smoke marijuana there as well.
Right.
Because it's a private club.
Yeah, all right, so we'll deal with that later. Or not at all.
Well, this is all been printed in the warrant anyway, if you want to change anything, you have to be making a motion on the floor.
No, I think, I think the amendments are fine.
Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this one? All right, so, anything else before we?
Yeah, again, I just want to reiterate, this serves a purpose for both sides, I think, for the people that are for it and the people who are against it, it gives us the time to deal with the state getting their ducks in a row, so we can hear people out and make rules and bylaws for it, and then also, I just want to make sure that, maybe that's stated in the handout, that it's beneficial for both sides, so.
Mm-hmm.
So I assume, Adam, you have a razzle-dazzle presentation for this one to sell it to the town?
I don't know about razzle, I don't know if I'm razzle-dazzle, but I can convey some information, I can bring sparklers, I don't know if they want me to light them off.
A little enthusiasm maybe?
A little, yeah, some enthusiasm, and again, I, I-
Anything you have to light.
I still, I, a little bit, due to the past of this topic at town meeting, a little concern of whether it's gonna be a slam dunk or not, so, yeah, I, I don't take anything to be a slam dunk, but-
Yeah.
So we'll have a one sheet that just-
Yeah, it'll be the timeline on one side and some information points on the other.
Okay.
What do we need to do?
A motion to close the public hearing?
Yep.
Move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then you need to make a recommendation.
All right, would anybody like to?
For or against, or no action?
Recommend that we're in favor of the, is it called an amendment?
No, it's a-
Amending the-
The warrant article.
Adding four point one eight to the bylaw.
We're in favor of the temporary moratorium on the sale and distribution of recreational marijuana.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Minutes approval, any comments on the minutes from four ten seventeen? About the minutes from four ten seventeen for the warrant process? Nope. Committee reports, Matt Allison's not here, so we'll skip stormwater unless Adam has any update on that?
No, it's, it's moving along.
And also skip agriculture commission, building reuse committee has hopefully had our last meeting ever, and we are of the opinion that we've accomplished our goals, we're gonna have a brief, we've made a presentation of that to the selectmen, they seem to be on board with us for that, we are also, we had put warrant articles on the town meeting agenda for, you know, in case we had responses to the RFPs, and allowing the board of selectmen and the town manager to engage in the sale or whatever, to get those properties off the town's hands, we've left those on the warrant articles, and we'll make a presentation at town meeting, but we feel very strongly as a board that, for the town to move forward and have a clear path, that we need to get those properties in the hands of the town government, so, because right now, any sale of properties would have to go to a town meeting vote, and that's extremely cumbersome when you're trying to deal with, you know, an investor or developer, or anybody who's looking to put money up for these things, to have to do all their, their front load work and research and all that, and put money up and into that process, to then have to go on the whim of a town meeting to exercise that, and, again, the maintenance costs for the building are building up, the buildings are deteriorating, we really need to do, get this process moving along, some people say it's been, it's premature, it's, we haven't done enough research, I mean, building reuse committee was around for four years, we did a plethora of research and vetting, and we have a clear plan based on recommendations from the architects that we hired to study all our buildings, and make suggestions as to what we should do moving forward as far as town offices, and that's been very clearly pointed out, that the best business decision for the town is to move town offices to the Passios building and engage that as a new town hall and civic center, so, if that's, again, we'll make a little bit of a presentation about this at town meeting, but if that's the clear path, and that's been the recommended path that we're gonna take, there's, there's no reason that we, we shouldn't be marketing these other buildings to, to get them back into the public use and contributing to the town center atmosphere.
In regards to that, is that the recommendation of the committee to do that as soon as possible and abandon the other buildings, or try and sell those off to accommodate moving to the Passios as quickly as possible?
So, again, it's, that's gonna be up to the board of selectmen and the town manager, but to make the Passios building a real town hall for the future is gonna take some funds, clearly, which, I mean, you know, several million dollars to, like, really make it a town hall, but as far as moving the offices over there now and getting them running, certainly people can function in there as a building, it wouldn't be the, the town hall of the future yet, but, yeah, we could certainly utilize that sooner rather than later as, as a functioning town hall, so, the logistics of getting people over there is probably the smallest element of this whole thing.
Right, because you, I mean, basically, you need to sell off the surplus buildings to get the funds, but at some point, you have to draw the line and say, when are we gonna just move over there if these buildings don't sell, I mean, if we go the way we're going for another ten years, we're just gonna be losing more money than we would have just moving over, you know, so.
No, well, we want, we understand it's gonna cost a decent amount of money to renovate that building to the place that we want it to be for the future of the town, we have, I think, till twenty twenty-three, before some of the, the debt that we've accumulated for, like, the library and the public safety building expires, and then, and we'd be able to fund a project like that without going for debt exclusion or raising taxes to, to do so, and even potentially, we could phase it somehow, using the operational budget to slowly build it up into, into what it needs to be, but again, just like, there's, there's no funding source right away to make that happen, and any sale of these other buildings could help contribute to offsetting that, that cost.
So you're, so this becomes kind of a management headache, then, how do you, you want, you want the control of the properties to be able to sell them without, basically without interference from, from town meeting, right, and then, so you can market them more easily, and I totally understand that, but you're not gonna market them as one package, you're gonna have to piece them out and then move people over piecemeal, one of the times, like, if one building sells, those people have to go over someplace, right?
So, so again, that'll be an operational thing with the board of selectmen, it's beyond what the building reuse committee was supposed to do, we were only ever made to make recommendations to the selectmen, we weren't a decision-making body, so it's, it's really always has been with the selectmen to make-
To manage that, okay.
Yeah, but it's, it's, they never had the explicit ability to sell those buildings or enter an agreement with somebody on those buildings.
Right.
Aside from the primary school.
Aside from the primary-
Off the floor of town meeting.
Yeah, and, I, we left them on there as individual warrant articles, so potentially, people who feel strongly about one building over another can leave that under town control, and at least get the ball rolling on some of them.
That's a good idea, yeah, get used to it.
Yeah, yes, so, and again, they asked, Jamie Toll and I are putting together the PowerPoint presentation for this, and Jamie's done a lot of the work, but he asked me to put together a couple slides on the village district and, and the A P D to, because there was a lot of concern about what could happen to these buildings, and we never know, it could be this, it could be that, but my opinion's always been, we put a lot of time and effort into crafting those bylaws and making sure, I mean, doing public outreach and making sure that we had bylaws that met the needs of the, and concerns of the people, so any, anything that somebody who buys those properties does with them, I mean, it's gonna meet the expectations that we had for the center of town.
Yeah.
The, the need for a second layer of coming back to, to town meeting is, is almost redundant, so, so that's the argument we're gonna be making then.
Hmm.
Any other questions on that?
I, I mean, I support your opinion that we should, town offices should be in Passios, I'm just trying to figure out how we're gonna get from here to there.
Yeah, and I think, I really think that using that building and the gymnasium and just the cafeteria and the whole, what that building can be is so much more than just a town hall, and it really can be a community and civic center, and, you know, other towns in the state have, they spent tens of millions of dollars just to build community centers like that, to, to have facilities that we already have in, in an existing building, so, it could, it could definitely-
It's got a potential, a lot of potential.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you, do you have any indication of what, are they gonna put some kind of process in place to look into that, or are they just gonna do that themselves?
So at some point, there would need to be a, a building committee.
Yeah, they will, okay.
Someday, so, but you kind of need a funding source, too, to enter into design and, and that, so, again, the sale of any of these buildings could help get us there. So, school building committee- Um, so, school building committee?
School building committee will meet again on May 10th. Green Communities Task Force has not met, but just as a, for informational purposes, we did submit our final report for the year and they will be doing a walkthrough, I think with our Dewar representative, Kelly Brown, is that, is she from Dewar? So, just to make sure that we did everything we said we did and we're in good shape, so.
But Green Community, that was that?
Oh, it doesn't. Checking out early.
Yeah. Uh, MJTC.
Yeah, so a couple of, uh, a couple of meeting points. The previous meeting, the one before this one, that I wasn't able to attend, but I reviewed the minutes from, uh, the only really interesting point from that meeting for, uh, Town of Lunenburg was that, uh, they did approve and endorse, uh, the Summer Street acceleration of 1.05 million dollars. So remember, I had presented that, um, previously, so that was finally signed off. Um, the, uh, the Town of Lunenburg did send a couple of, uh, letters to them recommending approval and thanks. This, uh, most recent meeting, uh, we did a lot of, uh, more review of the tip. Uh, there's some draft option changes that have been proposed. None of them are good. Um, they're, they're in a situation right now where all of the projects are big and so they can't shuffle anything around to fill in gaps. So they could really use some small projects. Lunenburg has nothing in the pipeline. All we have is the, the Summer Street project. So, um, I don't know if we have an opportunity to throw in some small projects, uh, in there, but they would, if we could, you know, accelerate the design phases of them, they would probably get favorable attention because they would be able to fill in gaps in the, in the tip layout over the next five, six years.
Chase, oh, sorry. I was just gonna say, I thought I heard it's the selectmen talking about Chase Road.
Yeah, I thought Chase Road was a book job they had that, had it already been programmed? Did they already get the funding for that?
I believe that's already in.
Okay.
Yeah, it's already on the schedule. So there, there is nothing that we, nothing that I recall that we're not scheduled on. We have the details here. So let's see, uh... Pittsburgh. It's not on any of the gap reviews, so I'll have to find it in the, uh, in the official plan. But as far as I know, it's already booked in. And this is just the amendment, so I don't have the actual full tip here, I don't think.
I, I thought it was booked in too. I just-
Pretty sure-
That was the only thing that I could think of.
Pretty sure, all of our stuff was booked in and locked several meetings ago. But we had nothing that wasn't booked in, is what I meant. So there, there is opportunity here, 'cause they're, they have, you know, literally like millions that are gonna get rolled over that we might not spend because they don't have a project that'll fit in to the budget. And it, it's always bad to leave money on the table. The only other thing that does, uh, potentially, potentially affect us in the future, uh, is the state and federal freight corridor designation, uh, was updated. There is a request for identifying urban and non-urbanized area, um, roads for the state and federal freight corridor designation. The only, um, piece of roadway that affects Lunenburg is Route 70 from Route 2 to Keatings, uh, goes through Lunenburg, and that is, uh, on the candidate list to get, uh, designated as a state federal freight corridor designation. Now, they're gonna designate it, um, and there's the potential that someday in the future that may, um, grant us funding that we could do improvements to that road based on the fact that it got this designation. But right now, there's actually no funding plan that correlates to these designations. So, uh, it's a, it's a future potential thing, I guess.
Is it Keatings that makes it a freight corridor or is it just-
It is Keatings that makes it a freight corridor. So there's, uh, the, the government, um, identifies a bunch of use cases that, um, identify what you have to have in the area in order for it to be able to be designated as a freight corridor. Uh, and because Keatings qualifies as a mine, um, they, um, they meet the criteria. But there is nothing else in our area that meets the criteria. Yeah, the funny thing is that the terminology and the regulations is very nebulous, like forestry. And if forestry meets the, the regulation, but they don't detail what forestry means. So I'm like, well, this, you know, Pierce's Tree Farm qualifies forestry, 'cause technically they're raising trees as a product and selling it and that falls under forestry. Now, like, yeah, but no, that's not the scale they mean, but there's no scale definitions in the documentation. So it's, so they made their, their best guess assessment, um, and they, they proposed the, the new roads at the meeting and everything looked fine from my perspective. And our next meeting is on May 10th.
But MRPC?
Uh, MRPC, um... I wanna say that this, the, the next meeting was canceled, but I'm not positive about that. Been away on vacation, so I'll have to double check. Unless, Marjorie, you don't know off the top of your head? No, I'll have to check. And nothing for open space.
All right. Directors' items. Anything for, we have annual town meeting here. Anything besides what we've already talked about?
Uh, nope, we just have the, the hearing next Monday on the recodification, which we inadvertently left off, uh, our last hearing.
Yeah.
So it'll be a quick review of whether or not you have an issue with the recodification and your endorsement, non-action, or, um, thumbs down on it.
Okay. Can we- Oh, please go ahead.
Um, can we add somewhat of a tutorial of what's expected of us during town meeting? 'Cause I think in August, we were somewhat unprepared. To have the moderator calling us up to the microphone, I just-
For, for Monday?
Like, who's in charge of reading the motions in town meeting? If we wanna put an amendment forward, who does that, that, that kinda thing, you know?
We can, would you like to talk about that on Monday, you mean?
Yeah.
Sure.
It'll just be us, so I don't think it's a huge discussion, but I'd just like to be a little more prepared than we were.
Typically, it's been either the chair or-
If the moderator's there, somebody from the planning board, please come up to-
Well, I, I guess there's-
And maybe it's my ignorance and I-
There's no singular way to do it, I guess, is really what it is. The, oftentimes, the chair acts as the voice and presence of the planning board. Or the director will do it at, at some times, which I'm happy to do. Or the board can strategize and, and come up with their own manner of doing it. It's, it kinda depends on the makeup of the board. It depends on personalities. It depends on, you know, if I didn't live in town, it would be something that I couldn't do.
But we have, what, three articles?
Three, yes.
And if the-
We can just get a brief description-
Sure.
-of what we need to do at town meeting regarding those three and that way we don't look foolish.
And if the chair's representing the board, they should really stick to things that the board specifically discussed and voted upon, not go off-
Correct.
-the reservation.
Yes. A, a, any representation of the board should be pre, preordained discussion of the board or result of a caucus at town meeting.
But he also has the ability to speak as a resident.
Yes, every, everybody retains their right to speak as a resident. It's all in the presentation. And I think that we're all aware of that.
Does everybody still have the energy and appetite to go into definitions and use table? I would applaud- I think we did a-
I'm always ready, but I'll leave the consensus.
What, without Matthew? I don't think that would be fair.
I would applaud the thoroughness that the board used in the, uh, public hearing on the water district. I think that set us up to, to have an approval in the next meeting, so I think that was good.
Can we make a motion of some sort or just, so we're gonna adhere to speaking to it on the 8th? Instead of just getting to the 8th and being, oh, well, we don't have time again?
Yeah, uh, Adam, do you wanna make sure that there's, uh, you keep the rest of the agenda light for the 8th with, as far as other applications?
Sure. You know, we're, we're already two weeks away from the 8th, so there won't be any other public hearings.
Okay.
And I'm in the process of working on the accessory uses, the, uh, overlay districts and, uh, the design criteria as the addendum to the second part of that, uh, like we talked about at the last meeting. So that'll be coming down the pipeline end of May, beginning of June.
Okay. I just wanna make it clear that when we're finished with discussion of each meeting, we know when the next time we're gonna be talking about it is, so everybody's prepared, so. Not that you're unprepared again. And although that was-
I guess, uh, the, the other note I would, I would make in directors' items is, um, it's entirely likely, um, it'd be extremely unlikely that we'll be down to four members after town elections. So if anybody's watching at home and thought this was a riveting bang-up time, then you might wanna think about, uh, putting in a talent bank form or writing a letter to the town manager, 'cause the board will be seeking a, a new member most likely sometime over the summer.
Potentially.
Unless you wanna do double duty.
For a term of one year, I believe, right? Is that right?
Usually, yeah.
Uh, well, it's, it's from the time that they're appointed to the next annual election.
So less than, it'll be less than-
Yeah, it would be less than a year. It's, again, entirely likely that will scare you off-
Yeah.
-or that you'll love it and you'll wanna run again.
Get your feet wet. Do it now.
So it's, uh, highly likely the 8th is my last meeting, so let's get, uh, as much bylaw stuff as we can on that one. All right, uh, meeting schedule we went over. We'll do the recodification on May 1st. Town meeting's the 6th, May 8th, we'll talk about the water department and bylaws pretty much exclusively. And, uh, nothing for the 22nd yet. Any public comment from the public? Come on up.
Um, I, Katie Adams from Williams Drive and I just, uh, was following the moratorium tonight, but, um, did have some sort of questions and concerns with, um, the town buildings. So I thought, wow, what a great chance to say them. Um, mine would just be, um, sort of, I mean, I grew up here, I live here now. We have a huge history of abandoning buildings, um, without a really clear plan of why we abandoned them. Um, I love the TCPassios school as a school. If we kept our elementary school there, it would've been on the same campus. The primary school is an odd location with no parking. So, you know, just looking at sort of the big picture of it, it's like that was abandoned as a site for a school because it was chosen that it wasn't something we wanted to renovate or keep up as a town or it wasn't worth saving. So I feel like now it's going to maybe be saved and maybe that's going to cost a lot of money, uh, maybe more than we even anticipate. So, um, I really like history and I see that, like, the town hall, if you look through the medallion, you see old, like, wood, like, you know, you kinda get the sense that this building maybe doesn't have a really good purpose, but at the same time, it's sad to sort of just try to, um, get rid of any of our historic buildings. I look at the Ritter Building and it looks tired and the, um, you know, everything seems to be falling off all of our town buildings. But part of me is, if a lot of money's going to be spent renovating TCP, to not just rush into it, and I know this has been going on for four years and I just show up and like have an opinion, but the Ritter Building's really pretty if you just, like, look at it, you know, and if you just stop for a minute and think of it and it used to be brick and maybe it could be, you know, blasted back to brick. But just thinking of the center of town and, and maybe that the future of the town offices could still be in the center of town would be a personal hope of mine, um, just because I feel like there's a lot of vacant commercial buildings in the center of town, so I don't know if it's realistic to think that these are really going to be used in a way if the town doesn't want them. I kinda see them as just, I mean, every, everything I did as a child is like a vacant building. My kindergarten, my library would become one. And I don't know, I just feel like at some point, buildings, we can't keep running from buildings, we just have to embrace that they're ours. And, you know, I look at the new high school and I feel like, wow, when I'm elderly, if I still live here, we're gonna be running from that, you know, and looking for some field to build a new high school in. So I'm a little nostalgic and so I'm a little concerned about just, you know, the, yeah, it's complicated to have a town vote on what to do with buildings, but I also think maybe it'll feel sneaky if town didn't realize that they're giving up these buildings without a real chance to weigh in on them. Because it is the center of town. If you're coming down Lancaster Ave and you kinda look ahead 'cause of the way you see the town hall, and that's not nice right now, 'cause it's like, uh, um, but then if you're way down at TCPassios and you look up past Kids Kingdom, what do you see? You see the town hall. It's in this, like, super prominent space and it really could be a beautiful building. And, um, you know, just, I was walking down the sidewalk tonight and the, the clock was going off and, oh, that's, you know, pleasant. So I'm just really super concerned about running from our town buildings and running from the center of town. And I'm concerned that TCP maybe is sort of like, like, long-term money pit. It could be a community center, but we also have, like, our high school with a lot of new community space that we're already paying to take care of that. So, um, I'm just really concerned about abandoning our buildings, 'cause that's what's happened here for decades. So, that's my opinion. And I was like, wow, I have a chance to say it, so, thank you.
You. Just, just to speak to that a little bit, I'm also very concerned about the, the history of the town buildings. My first involvement with the town, uh, government was on Historic Commission. It was, spent a lot of time learning about the center of town and, um, putting together presentations on the history and the development of it. And, um, just wanna assure you that I don't view it as running from those buildings. I view it as giving it back to the public and letting people enjoy those as a new use. There's money in the town budget that's gonna be presented at, at a town meeting to, to paint town hall, um, because it is in the Architectural Protection District and they, they have the right to say no to demolishing any historic building in the town center. So I'm very confident in the protection of any of those structures from, from being torn down. And I, there was, I mean, as far as the town hall as being the future of, of town offices, the town's kinda been moving in a direction away from that since the mid-'90s when they did a full architectural, uh, study of what it would take to bring this thing up and, and be the town hall of the future and, and they spent a lot of money in that study. And, and that got steadily shot down at a town meeting. So ever since then, everybody in charge has kinda walked away from really investing in the building and, and keeping it up like they kinda should have. So it's unfortunate the way that that happened, but we've kinda been moving in that direction for quite some time now. And as, as far as the Ritter and, and, uh, the primary school, I, I think those could be, especially the Ritter, so much more as a community space than just the offices that people go into when they wanna build something. If we could really get people back in there and enjoying that and, and, um, I think that would be a great benefit to the town as well. And as far as the financial end of it, the, the Passios was actually, as far as the architect's study, much, much more cost-effective than any of the other buildings or any other combination of any two buildings, renovating those and, and using them for the future. So, uh, yes, I appreciate your comments. I just wanted to respond because it, there was four years of work that went into all of it and we've thought about all those things and I am also very concerned with the upkeep of town buildings. And, uh, if I am fortunate enough to be, uh, elected to Board of Selectmen, uh, having a, an ongoing plan for the upkeep of our town buildings is gonna be a, uh, a major concern of mine, because right now it's, seems to have eluded us. That's my feeling on those.
I just wanted to say thank you for, for taking the time to comment. I mean, that's one of the biggest challenges that I think the town has is getting people involved and getting people to share their opinions, as you just did. And it's, uh, it's too bad, because there are a lot of, there's no real good mechanism to draw people in. You know, we struggle with that all the time and we really could use the input, you know, as we move forward on these things. But hopefully, like we were discussing earlier, there will be some sort of a, uh, another organization moving forward, you know, either a planning committee or something, a new building or rehabilitation committee, um, you know, that- rehabilitation committee, you know, that you could get involved in, or somebody else could get involved in.
I don't see anybody wanting these buildings if we don't.
Yeah.
And I really think we have to embrace the fact that they belong to us, and, I mean, maybe the Ritter could be a fabulous town hall if it's totally, you know, I just, I don't see the town hall being, I mean, just a batch of empty buildings is frightening. Like, I just imagine towns I drive through where I'm just like wowed by the aesthetics of everything, and I feel like that's not the direction we're heading in if we embrace a dated school that was abandoned.
From a practical standpoint, the Passios is one level, it combines all the office. I don't know how many times I drive through town and see either Adam or Marjorie having to walk over here to deliver paperwork.
Would you add on to the Ritter with all these millions that'll be spent on TCP, though?
That was actually, that was one of the studies. I can probably drag up the whole package of study that we did for that, and was, we did, one option was in addition renovation to the Ritter Building, one option was in addition renovation to the old primary school, one option was embracing both town hall and Ritter and renovating those, and all, all of those were double the cost of renovating the Passios building. And the Passios building had ample square footage and even more square footage, because we could get the, the PAC community cable down there and get them studio space as well, and still have room to grow for the future, and any other town use that might come up is room to put in there, too. So we looked, we certainly had them, explore all the options.
I feel like I could renovate, but I feel like it would be a lot to maintain. It's a big building. Long-term, it's like long-term maintenance versus just a straight renovation. I feel like having something more compact might be long-term cheaper, but I don't.
Yeah, but in the long run, it's more cost-effective to maintain one building than four, so that's part of it.
Wish we kept it as a.
I mean, I'm not looking forward to the wrecking ball coming in and taking downtown hall, but.
All right, any other board comments before we adjourn?
We have ongoing items. In regards to the complete streets, Matthew had brought up the sidewalk fund, and I know Adam had said let them get their report in, so I just wanted to see, I know Matthew's not here, but how and when we would initiate that discussion and.
The sidewalk fund, we can do it as part of our look at the integrating complete streets into the, the board rules and regulations.
Right, I think a first step would just be approaching the Board of Selectmen and telling them this is our idea. I don't know if it works in conjunction with this complete street.
Well, the sidewalk fund is run by the planning board in the places that I've seen it done. So you, as an elected body, don't need, I mean, you could certainly have the conversation with the Board of Selectmen, but it's based off of your rules and regulations. So it's, the fund is, is through the rules and regulations for subdivision and waivers you grant in that resulting in cash payment to said fund.
Okay, just like anything, I'd like to get their input.
Sure.
Possibly their support, but, and then, in regards to the 40B update at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, when they were giving the presentations for the new town council, they had said that rental units under 40B, 100% of those count towards, so are we counting?
Yes, the state, the state does the, well, Whalen Luxury, all of those will count towards the SHI.
And is, what about Trytown, because that's 40R?
Yes, yes.
But is that still considered?
They are, yes, because they're all rental, they, they all count.
So we're getting 100% of those counted towards, all right, good. And then the last thing is, is they're still parking at the parking lot regarding H and Imperial? I didn't know if there was.
The building inspector and I are trying to work with the property manager to figure out what they're doing with that and where they're, they're going.
Okay, and again, if at any time, we can encourage them, it doesn't cost them anything just to come in to speak to us.
Oh, I've had that conversation directly with the owner.
So have I. And that's it for me.
Any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.